I'd like to call this meeting to order.
And we especially thank you for our community, who has taken time to come here to hear about the workings of our school district. Lord, we ask that you would bless our troops, bless our community, and bless New Hanover County Schools. These things we pray in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the invocation, for the Fudge Legion's, Fudge Union College.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep.
Everyone be seated. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
No, no, we gotta introduce.
Oh, sorry. Let's give something.
Our singers tonight are from the North Carolina State Honors Elementary Chorus, and we're very proud of them. They're gonna introduce themselves to you and tell you what school they're from.
My name is Jose, and I'm from Forest Hills Global.
My name is Eva Jessup, and I'm from Holly Tree Elementary.
My name is Addison Daniels, and I'm from Forest Hills Global.
My name is Eli Dries, and I'm from Holly Tree Elementary.
My name is Sophia Lukasik, and I'm from Ogden Elementary.
My name is Maya Scorola, and I am from Anderson Elementary School.
My name is Colin Del Savio, and I'm from Holly Tree Elementary.
My name is Morgan Scott and Tessie, I'm in 5th grade at Pine Valley Elementary.
My name is Kinsley Nagel, and I'm from Eden Elementary.
My name is Cassie Fisher, and I'm from Cottington Elementary.
My name is Ava, and I'm from the International School at Gregory.
My name is Samantha Gomes, and I'm from Pine Valley, I'm in G school.
My name is Mackenzie Robinson, and I'm from Snipes Academy.
My name is Nehemiah Lynn, and I'm from Snipes Academy.
My name is Aleah Blaine, I'm from Forest Hills Global.
My name is Beadle LaCroy, I'm from Anderson Elementary.
I'm Mary Paige Mott, from Cottington Elementary.
My name is Lindsay Lerviere, and I'm from Holly Tree Elementary.
My name is Maya Gomez, and I'm from Cottington Elementary.
My name is Chloe Hughes, and I'm from Pine Valley Elementary.
My name's Katie Cobal, and I'm from Pine Valley Elementary.
My name is William Dello, and I'm from Cottington Elementary.
All of these students auditioned for their roles in the all state county chorus. Wow, I'm stuck on county tonight, folks, my bad. We are very proud of all the work they did, they got to sing and go to a clinic, and we'd like to give them one more round of applause, please. Thank you. Tonight, we're the Hogard High School NJ ROT-ROCT cadets, and we thank them for being here as well.
The teacher?
I think they anticipated being introduced individually, why don't you wanna give them that chance?
Be a cadet? Okay.
They've actually cadets.
Did the cadets? Did the cadets already leave?
They left. Yep.
Okay. Alright. You think they left?
As soon as the roll calls over, Stephanie has to go back to her school.
Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please? Here?
Here.
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 Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
None at this time.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
No minutes.
No minutes for today to approve. So we'll move on to item number four, recognition of achievement. Item A, School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we begin our recognitions by recognizing you all for School Board Appreciation Month. We always like to take this time in January to thank you for your service on behalf of our students, staff, and administrators of New Hanover County Schools. So this year, we have a very special presentation for you. Maybe if you all would help me by showing some of the gifts that you got? Because the public relations staff enlisted the help of the Special Education Department, and Julie Askew was just telling me how proud she is of her students in the SVA program and Occupational Course of Study. They created your gifts tonight. So this beautiful sign, Ms. Adams, the children made those. For you, and also, you should have a potted plant, you would hold that up. Lot of love went into those. So the students were very excited. You have some mortgages, I think you have a candy cane holder, and some other goodies. They were just very excited to do this.
They did a good job.
They did. So we're very proud of them, and we want you to know that Ashley and New Hanover High School provided coupons for you to have a free cup of coffee and an invitation to visit their campus coffee shops. The Hogard students made the candy cane holders and prepared thank you cards for you all, and Laney made the potted plants and the custom-made wooden name plaques. So it's just a token of our appreciation for you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have our community partnership. We're very pleased to have Ms. Katrina Knight, the Director of the Good Shepherd Center, here with us, and Kendra Harrison, the gifted teacher at Roland Grice Middle School, and they are going to share how they work together to support homeless families by providing basic life necessities to those in our community. So Ms. Knight?
Thank you so much, and thanks for inviting me to join you all tonight. Again, I was asked to talk a little bit about how Good Shepherd Center and New Hanover County Schools partner together. Our relationship is really twofold, as you can imagine. First and foremost, we work together to serve homeless children who are, of course, in a housing crisis with their families for a period of time, but they're also students within our county schools. In our most recent fiscal year, we sheltered 48 different children and their families, some for a period of weeks, some for a period of months. We transitioned 24 of those families who couldn't get back on their feet completely independently and needed a bit more assistance, whether financially or in terms of an affordable housing search. We transitioned 24 families, including 40 children, who were in our local schools, from shelter back to housing again, and that's really our, honestly, our ultimate outcome is to be a safety net for these families, but a safety net that helps return them to stability in our community again. Our school's social workers and, of course, our McKinney-Vento liaison work very intensively with Good Shepherd staff to make sure that children, while they are in our shelter, that their schooling continues uninterrupted. We have that shared value and commitment, and it really makes a difference in the lives of those children and their parents. And that support can vary. It can be school staff or New Hanover County school staff ensuring that those children are being connected to needed counseling. The school system has been wonderful about ensuring needed transportation, so that children can either go to their school of origin, if that's the wish of the family, or they might begin a new school that's closer to the shelter, it's up to that family. Also providing needed school supplies, that's just been a huge help, and for years, the McKinney-Vento liaison has swooped in with any number of items that our children might need, just to feel like they are prepared for every school day, just like any other child. Of course, our relationship has a second aspect, too, and that is that Good Shepherd loves to host service learning opportunities for our K-12 students. We offer age-appropriate shelter tours and combine them with on- and off-site service opportunities. Over 20 different school groups have visited and volunteered with us on a typical year basis, and that's across age groups. It's the younger children, and again, keeping it very age-appropriate for them, all the way up through high school students. Some examples have been preparing and serving meals in our soup kitchen, typically dinner meals, where in a very not-heavy way, students are encountering and having a positive interaction with men, women, and families with children who have sought shelter with us for the night. K-12 students also collect food donations, toiletry donations that we need. They come out for special workdays to help beautify the grounds. We have hosted a number of senior projects, and we've seen a lot of students, particularly the elementary school age, come up with ideas for their own fundraisers to support our soup kitchen and shelter, and that would include an elementary lemonade stand that was implemented for a few years and raised money that we could then benefit from to serve the homeless families that we had in the shelter. This is honestly just a sampling of your New Hanover County Schools who have volunteered with us on a regular basis or frequently over the last several years, and as you can see, again, it's from our elementary schools to middle schools to high schools. Here are just a few specific examples. Our Williston kids have, for a handful of years now, supported a new event that I'll speak a little bit more about in a few minutes, called Kids Fest, where we shine a particular spotlight on family homelessness, and at the time that photo was taken, it took place in Greenfield Park. We've since moved it to Hugh McRae, but as you can see, we've had teachers and students participating in that one weekend each spring. And then even after-school programs have rolled up their sleeves and initiated clothing drives and toiletry drives for us, and here's a group of students actually in our shelter delivering the items that they have collected for us. And you know, a dollar saved for us is as good as a dollar fundraiser, so anytime we don't have to purchase soaps and shampoos and clothing and shoes and those sorts of things, that's just as great a benefit to us, so we love those in-kind drives that students do. On the left is an example of one of many senior projects where our students are combining their research and learning in the classroom with hands-on efforts at Good Shepherd, and typically at that age, they would be doing an off-site fundraiser for us, as this young lady did. And then our younger children undertook Hearts for the Homeless toiletry drive, and they often will create or collect a shoebox full of items that we can then share with the individuals who have sought shelter with us. As Ms. Quadebaum mentioned, Roland Grice Middle is one of our partnerships and one that we wanted to highlight. The AIG honors students, under the leadership of gifted education specialist Kendra Harrison, have already done several things and then have some others still in mind that they plan to implement. First, they researched and discussed issues of homelessness and poverty, big issues, big issues for folks of any age, but ones that our students have been very capable in processing and discussing. They came to Good Shepherd for a tour of the shelter and the soup kitchen. They planned and implemented what they called a socktober event, where they collected hundreds of pairs of socks for homeless guests at our shelter, and those benefit not just folks who stay with us for the night, but even folks who may, because of a mental illness or other challenge, maybe are reluctant to stay with us but come in during the day for services. So items like socks or the things that we take for granted are hugely helpful for that group as well. And then these students are planning to return this month, actually, and they are gonna be inside the shelter assisting with our weekly food distribution, and that will not just be for homeless folks, it actually primarily will be assisting hungry seniors, families, and persons with disabilities, who are our neighbors right here in New Hanover County, but could use a little bit of assistance in terms of food support. Here's a photo of our Roland Grice students and the items that they brought in as a result of their socktober drive. And then just a note about service learning. Community service, of course, is wonderful, and we benefit from folks of all ages coming down to volunteer with us every day. We have about 500 regular volunteers and honestly could not operate a single day without them, but we have a special place in our heart for our student volunteers, and I admit we have a bias that anytime we can connect that service with learning in the classroom, we think it's more valuable for that student, not just at that age, in that classroom, right that moment or that month, but really for a lifetime, and it's just been wonderful to see the extent to which New Hanover County Schools' teachers are willing to be creative and to work with us, again, to find age-appropriate opportunities to read, to research, to learn, to do some critical thinking, and then to serve the community and others in a way that ties it back to that learning. So we have just really appreciated that opportunity. I mentioned earlier an event that is almost exclusively kid-focused, so many things in this community that benefit our nonprofits are very adult-oriented, fancy parties late at night that kids would find very boring, but each spring, and this May, May 18th to be particular, at Hugh McRae, we will again host a Kids Fest, and it's really an invitation for kids of all ages, young, older, all the way up, again, through high school, to come out, to learn a bit. They also have opportunities to, if they want, raise in-kind donations or funds that, again, we will direct expressly to sheltering and rehousing our homeless families, so that their peers, however long they need to stay with us, will return to their own housing, and the school bus pick them up there at their new home instead of at Good Shepherd. So something to look forward to and that the schools will be getting more information about. So again, I want to thank you. I wanna mention that I have worked in homeless services in other communities, and it should be a given that our school system works so collaboratively with homeless shelters, but that is not a given, and that does not happen everywhere, unfortunately, and so it has just been a particular relief and pleasure to be able to know, day in and day out, that my staff have more than willing partners in these school's social workers, in the McKinney-Vento liaison, and all the folks that we encounter within New Hanover County Schools, so thank you for that.
I understand you had some hurricane damage, you guys recovered?
I'm sorry?
I understand you guys had some extensive hurricane damage.
We ourselves have not. What we have experienced is the aftermath of the hurricane in terms of folks needing to seek shelter with us. We feel pretty fortunate that we ourselves and our different structures and grounds experienced some, but not too much. We are meeting, you know, we really prepared for an onslaught of new guests right after the storm, but in reality, what we have experienced is that the demand for Good Shepherd services have really increased, but it's coming in waves, two weeks out, four weeks out, eight weeks out, as folks who we didn't know would lose their housing after a period of time begin to. And one thing I think specific to your work, we have to work with HUD definitions of who's homeless, and so we cannot count, we cannot count as many students as homeless or in need of McKinney-Vento services, perhaps. Sometimes your numbers look a great deal larger, and that's because for the school system, you can capture all those students who are, to us, in a housing crisis, to be sure, but they're doubled up or overcrowding with someone else. We don't meet those folks usually until that situation falls apart, and the reason I bring it up is sometimes our numbers can seem much smaller, it's because we're only allowed under HUD to count those families who literally do not have a roof over their head that night as homeless. What's interesting is, in the aftermath of Florence, again, a month later, two months later, you know, the family that we met just this week, their crisis really began before Florence, but really became more acute with Florence, because they were the hidden homeless, they were doubled up with another family. They weren't the homeowner, they weren't the leaseholder, but now they don't have a reliable, affordable place to live, and so they need refuge with us for a period of time, where we can help mom and dad get back on their feet, make a plan for a new home, and then step in with as much assistance as they need to make that happen. So again, and everyday effort working with our schools to make sure that our kids are kept feeling as whole as possible, and of course, maintaining their schooling is a huge part of that, but it has been on the increase since the storm. Happily, we've been able to rehouse, I believe, over 50 folks since the storm, and that includes some homeless families, so even though it's become more difficult, to be sure, it's not impossible, and we remain committed to really helping folks stay in the shelter for as short a time as necessary and return them back to housing stability as quickly as possible.
Now, when you work on rehousing them, do you work just solely in the county, or do you look to place them wherever you can, even if it's outside of the county?
We do place folks outside the county. Good Shepherd actually really serves the region, we're the largest homeless service provider, honestly, in southeastern North Carolina, so we have folks seek shelter with us from Brunswick County, to be sure, fewer people, right, New Hanover County is the, right, comprises the majority, but some from Brunswick County, a smaller number from Pender. Sometimes we have homeless veterans who come from Onslow and what have you. Those folks in particular might be looking to be relocated back where they have social support, or they already have some employment leads or what have you. Sometimes we do have, just as has happened with my own staff over the years, 10 years ago, my staff lived in New Hanover County. More and more over the years, my own employees, sometimes it seems, are moving farther and farther outside of Wilmington in order to secure affordable housing, and we see that with our individuals and with our families as well, but of course, so much depends on, will their source of income also be out that way, and if not, will they have reliable transportation to make up the difference? So we do look out, because affordable housing, it's becoming a regional crisis, but for the city of Wilmington and for New Hanover County, it's very acute, absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, this is the community partnership part of our agenda is one of the highlights for me, so I really appreciate getting to know more about all that you do for the school system. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and any of you who have not been down to visit us, we are literally right down the street, and sometimes just a quick tour, answer some questions, and maybe raises other questions that you didn't know you had, so we love nothing more than folks seeing firsthand what it is that you've made possible, and that goes for our teachers and our students and others, so please take us up on that anytime, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. So we'll continue with our recognition program. Tonight, we are continuing with the Booster Clubs, and it is New Hanover High School's turn this evening, and we want to recognize our Booster, Booster parents, because they are some of our strongest volunteers. So when I call your name, if you are here, would you please come forward? We'll start with Ms. Betty Vermillion, who is the Senior Chair of the Lyceum Academy. Rich Garren, Treasurer of the Band Booster Club. Here's a familiar face, Ms. Denise Soloki, President of the Athletic Booster Club. Shannon Lees, President of the Cross Country and Track Booster Club. Shannon here? Okay, how about Amy Kroom, who's a member of the Baseball Booster Club? Well, thank you all for what you do for New Hanover High School, we really appreciate your support. Our next recognition comes from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Our schools have been recognized for their PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention Support Program. So I will call the principals and members of the PBIS teams, would you please come forward so that the board can recognize you for being excellent schools? Bradley Creek Elementary School was named a Green Ribbon School. Accepting for the school is Dr. Kaplanitis and Assistant Principal Tori Bailey and Counselor April Elkins. Green Ribbon School, Bradley Creek. Green Ribbon School, Bradley Creek. Next, Holly Shelter Middle School has been named a Green Ribbon School. Accepting for Holly Shelter is Principal Jane Keiger, Assistant Principal Alan Scott Carter, and Counselor Miranda Witkowski. Hey, Jane.
Good job, good job.
Congratulations. Next, our Superstar Admirals. Anderson Elementary School has been named a Model School. We would ask Principal Krista Holland, Assistant Principal Stacy Brown, and Teacher Christina Carter to come forward. Go Admirals! Next, Forest Hills Global Elementary School is also named a Model School. Accepting their award is Principal Bonnie Hall, Global Studies Coordinator Christina Daniels, and Teachers Blair Harkey and Michelle Crowell. Way to go, Forest Hills! Next, Riceboro Elementary School has been named a Model School. Accepting the award for Riceboro is Principal Mrs. Dolores Overby, Assistant Principal Louise Cruz, Counselor Rebecca House, and MTSS Coordinator Samantha Keller. Are y'all the Cool Cats? Go Cool Cats! I'm gonna call y'all the wrong thing, you know? And finally, Pine Valley Elementary School has been awarded Exemplar School. Accepting for Pine Valley is Mr. Sam Cantwitz, the Principal and Counselor Jenny Winkle. And our final recognition for the evening, Madam Chair, is the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics and DPI have recognized the Secondary Math Teacher of the Year. So, it should come as no surprise that Gregory, formerly the School of Science, Mathematics, and Technology, would produce the Teacher of Excellence in this field. So, at this time, I am very delighted to invite Chantel Palmer to please come forward to be honored as the Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher for the school year. Congratulations, Ms. Palmer.
Thank you, Ms. Quatobom. I do want to say, on behalf of the board, thank you to, thank you for all these wonderful gifts. I don't want to leave anyone out, but they are all really magnificent and very well appreciated. I don't know that we got to hold this up from the Principals Association, but I didn't want to forget this. It's beautiful, and I can't wait to dive into it.
The President of the Association, Ms. Holland, is here, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, very, very well appreciated. And I must ask you, I love the picture of the student who I believe made our, the plaque, so, thank you. Before we go any further, I wanted to make sure to recognize a very special birthday, Mr. Boyer. Did you want to?
Oh, she left. My daughter, my daughter goes to Blair Elementary, and she is in the process, as we speak, of turning 11.
Happy birthday!
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
After, at the announcement.
All right, moving on to item number five, call of the audience. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between the board and the speaker. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. We have had several folks sign up. The first one is Rebecca Trammell.
I have something that I'd like to give to every person on the board right now. Is it okay if I approach?
You can hand it to Ms. Adams, yes.
Tonight, I come to share a very sad situation that happened in one of our schools. I also bring a story of redemption and hope. You have a written account of a story. You have a written account of a story that I will not go into further detail tonight. To suffice, a first-grade class was having a holiday party, and the teacher gave gifts to every single child by name except one. That one child is also the only black child in the class. It is one thing to be different, but it is another thing to be treated differently. And she's only seven years old. Even if the slight was unintentional, it happened, and it could have left an indelible scar on this child's soul. There is a phenomenon called invisibility, and that particularly impacts minorities. This might explain how this happens. In our school system, in which schools are predominantly racially homogeneous, when things like this happen, it has a profoundly isolating effect. Thankfully, the story doesn't end there. The mother is a friend of mine from Laney High School. I found out about the incident and decided that what happened that day in school would not have a chance to rob her innocence and plant seeds of worthlessness or inferiority into her young psyche. We would change the narrative. People from all over our community came together to the school the next day and left gifts in the office for our princess. For all the shame, isolation, and disappointment she felt the day before, she would experience even more affirmation, love, and a sense of belonging the next day. She would be celebrated and honored for the princess she is. She is far from forgotten, she is loved, even by strangers she's never seen, but see her. I wish I could say that what happened to our princess is an anomaly, but it isn't. However, we can make a change in a positive direction. Our goal is not to humiliate, but educate, and we know that you cannot do both simultaneously. All the family is asking for is the opportunity to sit with board members to share their experience in detail. We are asking that this horrific, horrible situation, I'm sorry, we are asking to take this horrible situation and let it become a teachable moment for our educators and administrators in our community. We are asking for implicit bias training for every faculty member in the school system and a clearly articulated statement and enforceable policy of zero tolerance for discrimination in the classroom. No one cares how much you know until they know how much you care. When children suspect that they are not treated, that they are treated differently or not cared for, the teacher loses his or her effectiveness to educate their student. We all want what's best for every student in our schools. I believe that is why we are here tonight. My ask is that you meet with the Bronners, Kim Cook of UNCW and myself. Where together, we can talk about the situation and work together to make sure that what happened to our princess never happens to another child in New Hanover County. Thank you for your time.
Angela Davis?
I have been here quite a few times, new faces. My name is Angela Davis. I've been here quite a few times, been vocal about my opinions on the redistricting. And I know tonight, you guys are going to receive the Appendix G1 for the voting on the redistricting. So, while we had new members, I don't know if you've heard me in the past, I just wanted to maybe do a little refresher. Some, these are some of the past things I have approached. My first item up is the guidelines that were set up for the principals for redistricting. I feel like they've been challenged. A diverse student body. While it is set up as a guideline, the issue of FRL ratios at schools have been discussed in workshops and here at the school board meetings, which I haven't attended the workshops. Another one is an efficient and safe transportation. Again, the term of shifting students has been used. Call it what you will, it is busing. Even former Chair Mr. Higgins questioned this at a workshop that I attended. Second item, the 2014 Bond Referendum. Hoggard had a renovation of $14.5 million. It included a gym, a cafeteria, but no note of instructional classrooms. Laney received a $10.5 million renovation. They did get two new instructional classrooms, updated gym, and a media center. And another big item in question is the junior high bubble that we've heard so much about. My question is, why wasn't this addressed in the 2014 Bond? I realize a lot of the middle schools did get renovations, but no new capacity. Not one new seat for any of the middle schoolers. The Williston Proposal. While I appreciate the efforts in trying to find a solution on overcrowding, not sure putting sixth graders in the same school as 12th grades is beneficial for students due to social challenges and maturity levels. In closing, I would like to remind you of a statement from Mr. Anderson back from July of 2018, and I quote, "We get a better balance. We do not, we do not have enough seats to accommodate the middle school population or the high school population, but we can provide a better balance." My question to you, it's a balance of what? Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Cook?
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Congratulations on being recognized for your, the appreciation from your community. I am a professor of sociology and criminology at UNCW and a restorative justice practitioner. When I heard about the situation that was referenced earlier by Ms. Trammell, I was sad for the child who was isolated and excluded in the class celebration of the holiday. And I participated in helping to shower her with an avalanche of love and support the next day at school in order to shift the narrative from one of sadness to one of inclusion. The sense of invisibility is real. We in sociology and criminology talk about it quite a lot in terms of children who are children of color particularly being overlooked. And it is a consequence that lasts a lifetime in the lives of children. As a restorative justice practitioner, I've been working extensively in the public schools for two years now, helping to build more restorative practices here in the school. And it's been without question one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. In fact, just this past summer, we did three days of professional development training with the public school. It did include a segment on implicit bias. And at the request of the family, I just wanted to let you know that I'm available to help continue to have dialogue about the impact of invisibility and implicit bias and the conundrum that children of color often experience when they are faced with this type of predicament, and they have to cope with it at seven years old, or 14 years old, or 18 years old. So, I think it's, I just wanted you to know that I'm here and I care. And I am willing to be available to support the efforts to try and take the lessons of this painful experience into a better set of practices in our schools, which I'm glad to say we're on the uphill slope on that anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Lawrence Warren?
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Warren, retiree of this county. And in fact, I was teaching my first year at Williston Senior High School prior to the closing. Very active with the Williston Alumni Association. So, good evening to you. This past week, the beginning of a new year, many of us were shocked when we heard of the proposal for Williston. It reminded us of the poor timing when we were told about the closing of Williston Senior High School in 1968. The board could have proposed an innovative program in 1968 instead of closing it. Even though we do not have children in Williston Middle School, we have a vested interest in this historic school. I present some concerns from the Williston Alumni Association. Number one, total community involvement is critical. But it shouldn't have been instituted, it should be instituted on the ground level. The limited info that was shared in the media last week did more damage to some of us than good. Communication is essential, and you are implemented, and you have implemented telephone calls to parents yesterday. Many parents did not receive the complete message, those grade levels that were to get them. Did you get the result you wanted? Or did you get the result you needed? What percentage and what parents responded to the survey? Number two, so we need to implement diversity in the schools? Why move the black students from Williston? Where will they go? To an existing crowded school? You, the school board, approved the district lines with a certain purpose in mind. Fine arts is appealing to what population? Number three, what qualified research have you done to prove that a school of fine art is the shoe to fit the need of the students? Is the community made aware of the success level of SNICS, a school of fine arts? We implore you to deeply consider the proposed Williston High School a type of traditional high school with a polytech or trade vocational education focus. Let's truly step outside the box and look at that. We assure you that many of them would graduate job-ready with emphasis on a career. Then it would reduce the number of youth walking the streets unemployed. Yes, some of us are aware of Southeast Area Technical High School. Is it meeting the needs of all students in this county? How many of the Williston community could tell you something about that school? Why have a, why have another high school within one mile of an existing high school? And number five, even though you have shared your preliminary desires, we kindly request that you use two to three years, two to three years to research, make visits to other successful schools with similar demographics, involve the community inclusive of parents, communicate and let us buy into the new proposal. The Williston Alumni Association has been involved in support of a Williston Middle School. We value the history and the excellent education that we received from Williston Senior High School. And we do value the power of the vote. I close with, down deep in our hearts lies a love so strong and true, a love for dear Williston. Thank you.
E.B. Davis?
My name is E.B. Davis, Senior. I am the Chairman of the Specialty Event Committee for Preset W29, and the President of Williston Middle School Group that's trying to bring some stabilization to the community and the school by improving the area around the school. I echo what Mrs. Florence Warren has said, but I would like to see that members of the alumni and the Williston group be a part of the planning situation so that we can make sure that the curriculum is including vocational training, diverse occupation, so that when our kids graduate from school, that they will have options of having experience and being able to move forward without having to start from experience. Thank you kindly, and have a good evening.
Laura Butler?
Good evening. I'm a seventh grade teacher at Williston Middle School, and I'm proud to present this prepared statement on behalf of a large group of our faculty tonight. We respectfully request that the New Hanover County School Board consider the following observations and suggestions regarding the decommissioning of our school community as you move forward towards your vote next month. We appreciate that there is a need for advancement and change at Williston Middle School. We are fully aware that our test scores have not met district standards, even though we have a highly qualified and talented faculty. We believe that this problem has been exacerbated or even constructed by the redistricting lines approved by this Board over the course of many years. We, Williston teachers, meet our students where they are when they come to us, both academically and developmentally. Even though they grow during the year, many fall short of the magical three on the EOGs. We work hard to make sure our students read better, think more critically, and have stronger skills when they leave our classroom. But when it comes to the EOG, stronger isn't always enough. A two isn't enough, and so we are deemed a failing school with failing students. We disagree. We believe that responsible redistricting resulting in a more diverse student body would ameliorate this situation, and that we would see both our struggling students and our high achievers excel. Prior to Thursday, January third, last week, we expected that we would see a change next year with redistricting, but we were very surprised, indeed, we were shocked, to discover that there was a plan put forward to dismantle once again the Williston community and quickly impose a new paradigm. This has historically been the action taken by the New Hanover County School Board. Nineteen sixty-eight desegregation saw Williston Senior High School summarily discontinued, a shock and a deep loss for Wilmington's African-American community. Subsequently, the ninth grade center and junior high school at Williston were both reinvented, resulting in the existing middle school structure. None of those approaches has brought about the equitable and positive change that we trust this Board would truly like to see. In a collaborative effort in recent years, we have developed curriculum for our students to teach them about Wilmington history, three defining moments particularly in Wilmington history. The coup d'etat of eighteen ninety-eight, the desegregation of public schools in nineteen sixty-eight, and the saga of the Wilmington Ten. If we are to be reinvented again, the important historical significance of the site should be intentionally woven into the curricular fabric of any school that would build upon the Williston legacy. Finally, we respectfully request that this Board take adequate time to consider the rich and complex history of the school, recognizing both the exciting opportunity to make positive change and also heeding the real danger of perpetuating historical injury to the immediate community. We would ask this Board to allow Williston Middle School to stay in operation for at least another year, while reasonable time is taken to artfully and intentionally develop a school worthy of the legacy of the greatest school under the sun. Thank you.
My name is Edwin West, and I'm a senior at New Hanover High School. I have been following the redistricting process for about a year now. I know that Dr. Anderson, Dr. Markley, and the Board have worked very hard to put forth a redistricting proposal that is best for the district, and I agree that schools should be redistricted. Having said that, there are still some things that concern me deeply. Under the current proposal, only rising seniors would have the option to stay at their current high schools. I believe that each student, if they can provide their own transportation, or at least get to the nearest bus stop, should be able to stay at their schools. Changing high schools can be very detrimental, both academically and socially, breaking relationships with teachers, coaches, and peers. I think this should be avoided as much as possible. Another thing that is deeply concerning to me is the free and reduced price lunch population distribution at my high school compared to others. With version two, New Hanover's free and reduced price lunch population would be at around forty-eight percent, barely a drop from now. Hoggard High School's free and reduced price lunch population is twenty, is twenty percent lower, which is a dramatic difference. My, my high school has, by a large margin, has the most of this population, and I think that there needs to be a more even distribution system. Studies show that the higher this population at a given school, the harder it is for the school to be successful. Like I said before, schools do need to be redistricted, but I think the Board needs to take more time to consider additional issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number six, Head Start, Head Start Liaison Report, Appendix A. Ms. Miles, Mr. Bulliers, are we going to turn it over to Ms. Miles?
Wow, we have a lot. So if I may, Madam Chair, I'll start out with our Head Start Liaison Report for the month. Again, this is recycled information. We have some highlights to point out. At the bottom, information sharing. We would like to invite everyone to attend the Block Festival that will be happening January twenty-fourth at Johnson Head Start Pre-K Center, starting at five o'clock. We also wanted to point out, each child received an additional free book from the First Book Grant, and we did conduct Policy Council Meeting in December to approve our five-year grant, and our next meeting will be February the thirteenth at five-thirty at the Spencer, Dell Spencer Building. I might also have you look at the daily average, ninety-one percent, that's outstanding for the month of December. And then we also have maintained above twenty-six IEPs, which is required. We're at twenty-seven. So moving right along.
Does anyone have any questions about the information presented in Appendix A?
Can you explain the, the process for the five-year grant? It's not something that we, we automatically get the next five years, is that, or something similar to that? Or how, how do you go about applying for the next five years?
Okay, so we'll dig a little bit deeper into that after we finish our monthly expenditures report, but that's very important, and thank you for pointing that out for us. So next is our monthly expenditure report for November, the ending of November. Again, we're a month behind. So this is the summaries of your purpose codes and your objective codes.
Shannon, just a question, because somebody asked me this today about federal dollars. We're not having any federal impacts due to the current shutdown, correct?
No, no. It was approved in September of eighteen. So we're good there. Now, the services that we partnership with may be affected, and for our parents, but yeah, that's been recycling as well. So when we look at this report, we do know that we don't match the fiscal year of our state, so our fiscal year begins in May, so that's important to direct your eyes at that. So we will have much more to talk about getting closer to the end of the fiscal year. As you can see, our budget is liquidated by salaries and maintaining our, our program If I may, we can take a peek at our in-kind, non-federal share report. This is reported on a quarterly basis. We got a little off track last meeting, so we are going to be sharing it tonight.
For our new Board members, in order to get funds for Head Start, we have to provide in-kind matches to include, the building is one of those in-kind matches, and so she has to report that out to the Board on a quarterly basis.
And this highlights the success of Board of Education being the grantee, non-federal entity for Head Start federal funds, because it's, it's a great partnership. As you can see with our in-kind expenditure report, we, we count a lot of our state-paid salaries for that school, utilities, technology, maintenance, HVAC system, it is a shelter for our community, and that's important to maintain. Feel really confident, and our finance team does as well, that we are right on track with these numbers as well. So I don't see any at-risk or concern at this point. You know, I'm really getting excited about jumping into the grant, so whenever you're ready, just let me know. Do you have any questions?
Keep going.
So, Mr. Warman, as we were earlier discussing, this is your five-year grant project for Head Start federal funds from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four. What does this mean? This means that, great job, New Hanover County Schools Board of Education, we have maintained at, at speed and met our expectations, and have excelled on our audit reports and reviews. Therefore, we are entering another new cycle, one to five years, with our Head Start funds, and this is to provide comprehensive services for two hundred and sixty qualifying three and four-year-olds in your county. Every year, we will be voting on the renewal of the grant, but this is the five-year project. So you're going to see long-term goals, strategic plans that are embedded with your, your short-term goals that are embedded with your long-term goals. You're going to see, take a peek at some strategic, some community assessment points, and we will take a little bit deeper dive on looking at our scorecard, our selection scorecard, on how do we place these students? What does the government look at, and what do we find as important as a local entity? We'll be looking at our required training and technical assistance plan, snapshot of our budget categories, and finishing up with assurances that would later be signed by Ms. Eastep. So if I may, this is a narrative form, a very, very condensed version, so I can only imagine how you're feeling right now. We're going to start out with long-term goals. So our long-term goals, focus on curriculum, let's keep building that ship, let's dig a little bit deeper, okay? Since two thousand and fourteen, we started this curriculum. Let's get into our studies, let's get into critical thinking, let's get into book studies, let's do some shared partnership with that, with our schools. Goal two, family engagement. We're going to improve that, we're going to reform that a little bit, we're going to look at, what are we doing with our parent committees? How are they being selected? And what do we do next? I think that's very important that we're looking at that as a team, I feel really good about it. Then our strategic goal for three would be ending up with continuing conscious discipline, which is in alignment with the students we serve. It's a trauma, problem-solving program to help equip teachers and administrators to learn a little bit more about how to work with children at risk, focused on self-regulation skills and reflection of what we are doing and what we would like to see out of the behavior. So instead of policing so much of the behavior, they can start doing some teaching. So it provides them with the skills. The short-term goals, as you can see, again, in alignment with your long-term. We have to remember to keep class, which is required, and that's in goal one, and that's your classroom assessment scoring system that's required by your Head Start, which again, is great practice with early learning, it's the way to go. Goal two, again, piggybacking on your long-term, going to reform that and look at how we're selecting those parents. And then again, always a new way of looking at how to manage those behaviors. How, how do we look at that as teachers? One of the important sections of this large grant is your community assessment, and we've sprinkled that in with the next few pages. So what we did know is that we needed to serve students in SNIPs area, Sunset Park, Rachel Freeman, Forest Hills Elementary, Mary C. Williams, the north part of, of the district. So that's going to be the area that we're going to zoom in on, and that's based on our community assessment. Were required then to do a self-assessment, which was conducted the end of April of two thousand and eighteen. What did we learn from that? We learned that we need to continue to learn more about trauma-informed programs and how to teach children in poverty. So we're going to continue to build on that based on our self-assessment. We also learned that in order to support Head Start funds and the children and families that we serve, we need to be focused on mental health for the whole family. We need to focus on family engagement, the whole family. Needs to be hands-on, and we need to continue to be evidence-based to produce effective outcomes, and we're doing that. Programs were listed, we need to support, we need to transport, continue to transport our students into these programs. Intensive home visiting is a must, and then universal health assessments, meaning when we put high-risk indicators on our health assessments that look different than your kindergarten and other assessments, they're on there for a reason. We need to be lead testing our students, and we need to be doing screenings such as dental and vision and hearing. And so that's additional pieces, which is important to preventive care and early learning. So we're going to continue to educate our partners in that. We talk a little bit more about who we're going to impact and how we're going to impact that, and at a later date, summer session, we'll be looking at outcomes report from eighteen nineteen, and you'll be looking at those pieces. So we'll continue to measure our, our progression of our students with using our Teaching Strategies Gould Assessment, which is in vertical alignment with your KEA. Delivery of services, again, kind of recycles that information, again, regurgitates that. We know who we need to be serving. The next supporting document that we have embedded in our grant is our organizational chart that's required. So this is a diagram, a structure of how Head Start program is organized in, with New Hanover County schools. So the important piece that we added here, it looks a little bit different, is Head Start Policy Council, which is in joint governance with the Board of Education, and we have a Head Start Liaison who will be serving on Policy Council and is a Board of Education representative. So...
Just a note about this for new Board members, you actually serve a dual role as a Board member. You're a school board member, but you're also the Head Start Board. So every time we have these Head Start updates, it's almost like we're holding a little mini meeting within a meeting related to Head Start.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. So we added family pieces and children and families. So we added family pieces and children and families being the center of our focus. Without our children and families, we wouldn't be here tonight. Another additional piece is the area of services we provide. We talked about that in the narrative. This is a required map that we have to submit with the full grant project. So you might be asking why all of the mat, map. Preschool districting is a little unique to New Hanover County Schools. Head Start serves three-year-olds. In our other programs besides CRA at Mosley, Head Start's the only program that serves three-year-olds. So if parents qualify and are willing to transport, they can be car riders only. So we want to make sure we reach those qualifying students, and there's not barriers such as that. So it's important to know that the Head Start grant does support three- and four-year-olds. Several programs don't. A critical piece to this is our ultimately scorecard. So when we take a look at this card, we know on the left categories are federal government and some state guidelines. What we do unique to our program is we added, we add sections with Head Start funding, Title I funding, and NC pre-k state funding. Why do we do that? So that when we score, the highest priority of students get placed first, or on the selection priority. Your age-eligible, but not all students qualify. So we go with the students, the system, not we. The system goes with the highest-scoring students. We have two-hundred-and-sixteen Head Start. We added these boxes to make sure that we knew if we put them in multiple programs, that us, as being New Hanover County Schools, that we'd meet those funding source requirements. So we've added that. So if we check those boxes, we know, when we look at the students folder, that they do qualify, they're eligible for NC pre-k, eligible for Head Start, and eligible for Title I. Sometimes that's not always the case. We can serve up to twenty-six students of over-income, and I believe to date, we're at seventeen over-income. So we don't even have to utilize the ten percent over-income because we're, there's such a high need for Head Start. I think that's important because a lot of programs have to do waivers. In our case, that's, we've got the students. Have about forty students on a waitlist, forty-five currently, but in the past four years, it's been close, the past two years, it's been close to forty students, mainly three-year-olds. We were very grateful for county managers. Now, at Mosley, we can serve forty-five of those students, so our waitlist went to an average of a hundred-and-forty-two, a hundred-and-fifty-seven, to forty. So the selection criteria scorecard is important also when we notify our families, because in the community, they want to know why Auntie got in and Uncle didn't. So it's important, I believe, as board members to know that there is a process. Very important to Head Start funding is a school readiness plan. It's required. We, as a team, feel very confident that we're exceeding these expectations. School readiness is to make sure that our children are ready for school, families are ready to support their children's learning, and very importantly, schools are ready for children. So it's a collaborative effort. The purpose, it's mandated, but the purpose is to make sure that our students have countless opportunities to progress in all of these learning areas set forth by the school readiness plan. So it's very critical that we give them those opportunities. Again, it talks about how we're going to do it. It's a roadmap of how we're going to do it and carry out those skills. Those five domains are in alignment with kindergarten to third grade, so that's very important. Within those domains, we have our goals. So as a board member, you might want to go, hmm, we know the domains are required and are part of the North Carolina State Standard Course of Study for Early Childhood, but hmm, where did they come up with those goals? Well, again, we are adapted from evidence-based, and we believe as a team, kindergarten and preschool, together, that these are the most beneficial skills that these children need in order to be prepared for kindergarten and succeed in academics. And again, they're based on your required state learning domains, along with your Head Start requirements, with your FELD, which is your North Carolina Early Childhood Learning Standard Course of Studies. It's a very tight plan, which is really good. So we go on to talk about that. The little bit of the history of that is also embedded in this document. We have started an early learning collaborative team and feel very successful about it. This is a time that we can get together with kindergarten and preschool teachers and kindergarten and preschool administration, and we collaborate on the transitioning of our children from preschool to kindergarten. Shared language, shared teaching, peer observations, very critical to equipping them for kindergarten. Any questions? Are we good? It's a lot.
Is there anything on this related that you're going to need a vote on?
Yes.
The grant itself, correct?
These are the sections condensed of the larger project. The next, Technical Assistant Training Plan, again, it's tight as a glove. It's the roadmap of how we're going to spend our PA-20 funds, which is your program accounts for training money. We are given $26,843 that are delegated for professional development, staff development, and this plan tells you, based on our self-assessment, our long-term and short-term goals and strategic plan, on how we're going to carry out those services. It is in alignment with your long-term goals, so that is how we're going to spend those we have our budget categories. Your Head Start federal fund budget is over eighty percent in salaries and fringe, so we're going to spend it, my friends. In the middle, you can see squeezed in there is your training technical assistance, your PA-20 monies, and that was the reference I said earlier with the $26,843 specific for professional development. Non-federal share by the end of next fiscal year, which would be April 30th, if next year is 5:07, 1:05. So in a nutshell, we do need to move forward on requesting your approval for 2019, 2024 Head Start non-competing grant to serve our children in our community.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I have one. You talked about helping the children transition, and you mentioned the different schools that they would be dispersed to. How are you helping these parents in their transition so that they stay engaged when they go into the kindergarten setting?
Well, that is a great question, and that is the reason why we focused on goal number two, to enhance that and reform that a little bit. So what we do is we do transition nights at our schools, and we're a large part of that, and we make sure we communicate with our parents and do some hands-on activities with them during this transitioning night. However, when they get to their new school, we don't want to let go all the way. We want to make it a little bit stronger, so that when they get to kindergarten, we can be a part of that as well. Does that answer the question? Just to enhance that a little bit, the process.
I have sort of a supplemental question, again, having to deal with parents. I'm really glad to see that you're using conscious discipline, and I saw that you had mentioned something in there about the Parents Night and conscious discipline. I know that there's some training opportunities for parents. Do we do anything with parents, or do we offer any kind of training for them? I know it's optional.
So in our grant, when you look at those pieces, the school readiness, you see that there's a parent-community engagement plan with our, and so you have to have the parents a part of what we're doing when we do these trainings, such as Policy Council for one. We do group trainings with them, and we also have opportunities to go to other conferences. But direct services on a monthly basis, in a quarterly basis with Johnson Pre-K Center, we do a lot of hands-on activities at our family nights. The Block Festival, for example, is going to work with the parents and demonstrate and show them how to use this skill, how to play with these blocks, whether you're at home, and what are we doing with these blocks at school? What does this mean to my child? Because sometimes that manual doesn't have that when you're a parent. So we take that to a different level. When you really look at these documents, you will see again and again the importance of hands-on. And in both documents, technical assistance, you see funds allocated for parent training. It's required by Head Start to continue to build on those parent skills.
Ma'am, the training is optional?
Yes, sir.
So what type, what percentage of buy-in would you say you get from the parents at these training events? I mean, is sixty percent, eighty percent? What percentage of the parents actually show up?
You know, this year, it's been off to a rocky start, but previous years, we've had a large, I would say over seventy-five percent at Block Festival and at center time playing on how to model what our centers are for in our classrooms, and the purpose of those, and how we can extend that to our home. What we struggle with a little bit is Policy Council, which is program governance. So it's a lot of these important documents, but sometimes not a lot of fun. So it's just a different kind of work, and so to maintain that momentum at the beginning of the year, like October, never, we're on fire. But by like March and April, we kind of trickle down to ten parents. And that's hard, because of course, at the school level, they get to see their friends, they get to be in a group effort with their other parents, and at Policy Council, it's a lot of documents. So we can look at how we can make that creative.
You have any ideas? Let us know.
Thank you. And thank you again for your continued support. It's very important.
Thank you, Ms. Smiles. And just for the record, the new liaison is Mr. Boyer, and he will be taking over his duties.
I'd just like to add, I share your enthusiasm and your passion for this. I couldn't see any more valuable service to our community, so thank you very much for the position and the honor of serving as that liaison.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiles. As always, you, great job.
Thank you.
I would just recognize one person in the audience who helped us get this grant when we initially started, and that's Ms. Emma Jackson. Lots of things I'm proud of, but the work that she did and our folks did in bringing this to the Hanover County Schools, a lot of that goes to the work that Ms. Jackson did when she was with us. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, so we've had motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so we will do that.
Thank you, Gable.
Thank you, Gable.